Agenda for Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. First time on our agenda is the two thousand and twenty-six budget overview. Turnover staff.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, members of council. Session number five. I had to actually think about that as I was putting this together. It seems like every week, but we've made it. This is the last work session to look at some of the inputs to the two thousand and twenty-six budget before it kind of has a bow on it. And you look at public hearing and consideration for the adoption at your next meeting. So as we've done in the past few, we'll go over any updates that have changed in the budget since we talked about it previously. And we'll focus more tonight on general fund overview, how we were able to get a balanced budget and look at it in the balancing act tool that's updated for two thousand and twenty-six. And then any other factors of the budget we haven't yet spoken about, we will cover those. So just a couple of budget updates. We unfortunately received our severance tax and federal mineral lease income. And normally this is a really, really great thing at the end of August to receive this money. But we did have a decrease of seventy-six percent from the two thousand and twenty-four collections. So we are very much in good company. There are communities along the front range that saw a ninety-five percent reduction from two thousand and twenty-four in much larger dollars also. So good news is we're one of many. Bad news is we're one of many. And, um, you know, in two thousand and twenty-four, we received about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So this year we got two hundred and twelve. What what they've told us from the state level is there were a larger number of appeals to some of the oil and gas collections and payments over the prior year. So it's them remitting money back to some of these producers that were owed over the last couple of years. We shouldn't have this level of activity that slowdown every year. They project that it might go up. Thank you, Jules. Up to closer to the two thousand and twenty-four levels next year, although I'm a little cautious now that we saw seventy-six percent decrease. So what we're projecting is about a seventy percent level of our two thousand and twenty-four so that we're not overly reliant next year on on those dollars. We don't want to be scrambling in the general fund for a couple hundred thousand dollars next year. Staff worked pretty hard to update our transfers and enterprise fund costs. And we'll talk about it in more detail on a further slide, but this really helped the general fund balance as well. So we have a heightened focus this next year on our infrastructure and enterprise systems that are a part of all of our capital projects. And it's only right that those projects and those funds are paying their fair share of everything it takes to run those funds and those projects. So staff time, some additional supplies and services costs will be borne by the enterprise funds in a higher level this year than they have in prior years. Rightfully so, given the nature of our work. And it also gave the general fund a little bit of breathing room for next year. That did allow us to achieve a balanced budget. So you'll see if you looked ahead in the slides, we're balanced by about a mere eight thousand dollars, but it is a positive number. And that couldn't have been achieved without a lot of hard work from departments. And folks are still working on identifying exactly where those dollars are going to come from. We've worked with them to identify the large subtotal for their departments. And now they're working to figure out how they can make that work. So we don't have the line item budget kind of as that supplemental document today, but we will have that for the next council meeting. When you look at the budget book, you'll also have that supplemental budget. So that'll give, you know, every dollar, every line item for every department of the city. You'll be able to see that before you vote to approve the budget. So we'll spend the majority of our time tonight on the general fund overview. And I have the budget simulation ready with two thousand and twenty-six numbers. So when we looked at it previously, it was the current year budget, just to give a flavor of how that works and what the functionality was. But what you'll see is is more detail of these numbers. And just wanted to share before we went into that. So we anticipate starting our two thousand and twenty-six year with almost nine point two million dollars. So some of the capital spending we've done the last couple of years have brought that number down. And then you'll see very, very close, twenty-one point, almost eight million dollars, both in revenues and expenditures for next year. And we do have a net result of a positive, net result of eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. So just to make it clear, some of our slides show numbers in thousands and in millions in different. This is this is not, those are straight dollars, eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three. And then our ending fund balance in the general fund will remain about that nine point one million dollar level. And then we will also look at reserve levels too here. I will open this up and not hopefully mess up Jules' oh, because it'll switch over. Okay, so what you're seeing is the draft two thousand and twenty-six budget in balancing act. Much of the same for twenty-five, although, you know, staff went through and and removed the language. It said, you know, it's on the ballot for November for property tax, although we retained a lot of the information about why, a lot of information about that property tax is still low, given our mill levy. The communication piece is still in there. We can, we can look at it as well. The link that's in your packet, and I'm happy to send it out. You're welcome to play with. It's not live to the public yet. You have to have the link right now because I wanted to make sure there wasn't anything in here that you all weren't comfortable with and before we put it out to the public. But what I also learned is there's a couple of cool pieces. When you open this up and it says, you know, this is a survey. We want you to know what's what's in and what's out in the general fund budget and how the city uses your money. There's a helps and tips piece at the bottom that will tell folks if, you know, if you forget and you get in the middle of it, uh, forget where to click. There are two ways you can adjust the budget and it tells folks you can change the way money is spent or you can change the way money is brought in. And that's really all budgeting is really, one of these two pieces. So it does kind of walk you through as a tutorial on how to adjust the figures if you got there and got lost. And it will tell you if you're in a deficit or whether you're in a surplus. So I thought kind of a nice, nice tool. If you're in here, that's what that little question mark does. So matches the information we just looked at for an eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollar surplus. Our revenues are broken up by these categories here on the left. Sales taxes at eleven point nine million dollars, and we talked about this in prior sessions. But many of the factors that go into these sales taxes are are very flat from the current year. Overall, it's a three percent increase from the initial two thousand and twenty-five budget to two thousand and twenty-six. It's locked. It doesn't allow you to to change that. I think we spoke about that, but it will tell residents. It takes a vote of the people to adjust their sales tax rate. So it's not something that's an easy fix to balance our budget. Property taxes, again, I changed the language to not say we're going to the ballot, but, um, you know, it's not yet identified. But City Evans City Council has identified the need to stabilize the general fund revenue source. The cost of providing services are increasing quicker than the revenue growth that we're anticipating. So we left this as that scenario of what could that mean to our community? If they say, yeah, this is something I would be looking at, voting yes would increase this. Right away at the top, you'll see, wow, I have one point eight million dollars to work with. That's pretty powerful of a start when they, hopefully, and when you all go and you look at the expenditure side, what could I do with that? I'll leave it no for now because that's what's included in the budget as we have today. Other taxes, it does give folks the ability to change these, although as a tax, um, many of these come from the state. They're tied to other derivatives of ways that we get money, like federal mineral lease income and severance tax, that sort of thing. So maybe not a change, but it gives folks the ability to even make a comment and say, this is something we should look at. This is something that I wonder why we don't get money for. Many of these are are very, very flat. If not, they're decreased slightly because of a decrease in our overall development projections. So building permit revenue is is down in kind of a five-year trend. Our use taxes are down in a five-year trend. All of these things are are helping to keep that revenue very, very flat in those outer years. Intergovernmental is the same. It will tell folks this might be, um, the sales tax from the city of Greeley. Obviously, we can't change that. It might be other grants. It might be other opportunities we get to receive money from other agencies here. Charges for services is three hundred and seventy-six thousand in next year's budget. I was thinking that one actually stayed fairly. No, this one did decrease. A lot of our charges for services relate to recreation and our facility rentals here. And so we are reducing the expenditure side for recreation. It has had some impact on the revenue that we ultimately receive or believe will receive for next year as have changes in our policies for some of our room rentals and parties. Some of the policies that we've set in place are having an impact on the revenue that we anticipate seeing next year too. But again, this gives you the opportunity in residence to go through and say, well, why don't we charge for this? Could we get money from from this certain type of thing? Fines and forfeitures is largely our police department and court fees. These are projected to be down slightly in twenty-six from maybe our five-year historical trend as we encourage and and wait for our police to become fully staffed. So we're at a point where tickets are at a lower level than they have been in the past few years. Although we've had great conversations with Chief Darlin, and we don't anticipate this to stay this way for very long. But that is our reality currently for the budget. Our miscellaneous revenue incorporates things like interest income and I think it's outside, or in oil and gas royalties that we rely on very, very little for the oil and gas money coming in. One of the pieces we will talk about more is the transfers in. So two point three million dollars is a big number. We haven't been over that two million dollar level in transfers in. Again, this is those enterprise funds reimbursing the general fund for some of our overhead costs to operate those funds. So we'll talk about that more. But this, again, you have the ability to increase that or decrease that. And in case I didn't say it previously, anything that you would do on any of these revenue categories to increase or decrease what you think we could or should charge will obviously have an impact at the top, whether you have a surplus or a deficit to to use. So on the expenditure side, this donut chart corresponds to the spending in the detail on the right-hand side. Our general government spending is about six point one million dollars. This category stayed pretty comparable to last year. I mean, every department had a five percent reduction built into our supplies and services. Some had larger increases in payroll due to changing staffing models and that sort of thing. But everyone is working towards a five percent salary, or I'm sorry, supplies and services reduction in each of the departments. So city council, you have your your budget there and maybe you think it should be a half a million dollar budget. You can go ahead and and slot that in and see where where you'd like to spend less to help balance that so that you always have that surplus at the top. City manager's office is about four hundred and ninety thousand. Communications, one forty. City clerk is three forty-six. Human resources and risk management pays for all of our workers' comp, property casualty insurance, that sort of thing. So it's a large number at one point five million. IT is one point two million and does also service a lot of our contracts, software services. Customer service budget's about two hundred thousand. Finance is one point seven million, and that includes all of the citywide utilities also, which is a large component of that. And again, those those items are included in here. What what do we really pay for in in finance and gives you a taste of those? So if you ever want to know where little pieces are, um, you know, help our residents look and say, here's, here's really what we pay for. And legal's about three hundred and ninety thousand. So that general government is a a larger chunk of this donut, but I think it helps to understand all the various administrative components that are underneath that. You'll notice general fund asset management, zero. This is one of the huge components that we had to not fund initially to have a balanced budget next year. You'll you'll see there's no capital either. So what your next year's budget means is we don't have any planned replacement of vehicles, equipment, or large projects, capital projects out of the general fund. And the way that we still look at funding those is we hope that as our revenues come in, have strong sales tax collections through the remainder of the year, we have excess revenue dollars we will collect, we hope, this year that city council could look at investing into those asset management components in the spring budget revision next year. So we kind of play that trailing game, making sure the revenues are here. We have them in our hands, and then we look at what those highest needs are and hopefully fund some necessary equipment needs in first quarter. And I'd imagine the request list will be pretty long. It's always longer than the money we have to fund. That is the the reality of having lower revenue growth than our expenditure. It's the reality of having a mill levy that is is very, very low. And as well as our revenue stream is diversified right now among our available options, it's it's not enough ongoing. So I did want to keep that in. I took out the capital piece, but I wanted to leave the asset management in here because I think that's a component that we have at least funded a couple of items, a couple of cop cars, the most critical operations needs, and we don't have any of that right now. Public safety, like everyone is, has been asked to do a five hundred or a five percent, sorry, SNS cut as well. And I know this, this is a challenge for for our police, a lot of contracts, things like dispatch. Axon runs every piece of technology in the police department, more or less, from cameras and recordings, video, audio, all of that. Those service contracts are quite expensive. So police is working hard to increase that. If you wanted to give them extra money in there, you could, you could do that and and see where else you might find the money. The court, the same. This is the last year for the Evans Fire District, two hundred thousand annual contribution. So that is in here under that public safety component. And again, that two thousand and twenty-six is the last year under that current IGA to pay those payments. Our community, actually, these next two categories saw the largest decrease. So our community development and our parks and recreation departments dug pretty deep to identify where these cuts could come from and did a did a great job, but I know all of these don't come without some pain points. So we do have building permitting and inspection broken out this year now that that's an in-house service as well, neighborhood services, as well as planning and zoning, and then economic development as part of the community development, economic development grouping, at least for our budget. I mentioned Parks and Rec saw some decrease our parks as they're restructuring and looking at reprioritizing how they do things and why and when and how. And as you all heard, there are some cuts here that are likely not sustainable, that I think the five percent right now as we're reevaluating our operations is doable for the the short term and likely not doable for the long term unless we're making some service level reductions to truly provide services based on the level of funding we have available. Imagine you'll have more conversations about those in the future. And then this category also includes our cemetery maintenance, forestry, and our facility maintenance as well. And then lastly, our public works category is one of the largest. Doesn't really look like it on the deal here in relation to public safety and general government. But we do spend three point four million dollars in our public works department as well. And that houses, you know, a small amount of public works administration and then largely our engineering, our operations and streets department, and then fleet as well. And fleets, I'm understanding, is one that is already just about at budget in early September. And so we're going to be looking at savings to figure out how we continue to fix the things that are breaking every day. So going back to the the topic of not funding asset management, the the needs are continuing to be very, very expensive. The laundry list of things that need to be fixed is not getting any shorter, and the money to accomplish both of those is not long either. So we have some conflicting pain points that will take continuous prioritization and careful decision-making to see how we can fix the highest priority items. So you'll likely see a budget revision at year end that will be truing up some of these pieces that we couldn't find savings for. As always, we look really hard at salary savings. There's always some in departments as folks move on or change positions. So we use those dollars first and then look at other operational savings before we go back and ask for more budget. I do anticipate there will be a couple of those that we'll have to ask for this year. So any of these categories, again, you're able to increase or decrease the revenue side, increase or decrease the spending side. If you wanted a very robust program in any one area. Oh, I picked a really small one. That's not very helpful. If it got to a point where we are in a deficit because you would like to see more spending in an area that outweighs the revenue we have available, it will, you can click submit and it will tell you, you'll need to balance this budget before you can submit. It's the same process we have right here, right? We can't submit a budget to DOLA that's not balanced. We don't have the ability. I don't have the ability to present a budget to you all that's not balanced. We don't have that luxury at the local government level to pull those funds from somewhere else. I think this is a really great message for members of the the public that I hope will go on and take a minute to see what this looks like. It will force you until you're in a surplus before you're able to submit this budget. And so it does also tell them at the bottom that we have about nine million dollars in reserves. And we look at those each year. This may, and I put in there that while the city currently maintains adequate reserves in the general fund, ongoing expenses are projected to increase at a faster rate than revenues are forecasted to increase. This may mean the city of Evans will need to utilize fund balance reserves to meet the needs of the community. And once used, these reserve funds are not easily or quickly rebuilt without significant change to the economic climate. So I want anyone who's looking at this budget to understand what these various pots of money mean. And once it's gone, it's gone. And not many of these are are renewable. We don't start over every year with a with a blank full bucket. So hopefully that'll give a little bit of context as folks are going through this budget, especially between now and October seventh. When you look at the budget, please get in there, please, please play with it. I'll give you a couple of days to look at it and if what's, I'll ask the mayor to maybe give us the heads up or the thumbs up if you want it live to the public. Elsa's been helping to translate the Spanish version of this. We had the two thousand and twenty-five Spanish version, but we'll get the two thousand and twenty-six. Again, just wanted to make sure you all were comfortable with some of the language before I asked her to go through that process. And then happy to have both these out there. I'd love the public to use them. I'd love them to submit a budget that will be able to receive all of the comments. Any of these little red add a comment buttons that are in there will receive all of those. And so I'm happy to share. Hopefully, we have a book of comments and thoughts from the public on what we should have done different with this budget. I would love to have this as something we consider in future years and look at what some of those comments are we we receive back. So please play with it in the next couple of weeks and and let me know if there's changes or what else you would like to see with with this tool. But I'll let Jules take back. We'll do everything we can. Okay, so moving on, thanks for allowing me to just kind of walk through the tool. It's it's exciting. It's fun to see the budget in some words other than just on my slides and hope you go through and use that. Just a couple of other factors I want to hit on. Overhead transfers, I mentioned, is one that is a higher dollar amount this year than we've seen in the past. So we anticipate about two point three million dollars. And I did say, I don't know that we've seen a level of two million dollars. This is up about four hundred and fifty, close to five hundred thousand, I think, from last year. And so we take allocated personnel costs that are, it also works with every department head, and we do an actual buy individual position and allocation on how much every single position spends, general fund, water, wastewater, storm drainage, and roads. We do it additionally for the ERA as well, but we want to make sure that that level of effort we are spending to support those activities and those funds are properly captured. We apply the same level of that allocation by department to the supplies and services that are generally for the greater good. Things like our financial audit costs, IT support, things that citywide everyone uses and everyone's required to have a piece of. We pull out things that the wastewater or the enterprise funds pay for themselves. So we, it isn't a blanket percentage on all SNS. Rather, it's those identified costs that we think support those funds. Our refuse fund has historically transferred five percent of that year's operating revenue back to the general fund to support the staffing of that as well. Many of the supplies and services costs are borne directly from the wastewater, or sorry, from the refuse fund. Things like the cleanup weekends, the staffing for that, that's paid directly. This really is for very additional overhead and administration costs. We are ensuring that our road tax fund is paying for personnel related to construction management and construction inspection on those road projects that are part of the road tax fund. We have been doing this the last few years. We had worked carefully with our bond counsel right away when the one percent road tax was approved by voters to ensure what those limits are. These folks are working directly on those projects and we are capturing that management cost of those. That will continue. And then one piece we haven't done in the past was account for the overhead transfer back from the ERA. So we have in these past few years had a offsetting cost to our personnel on the general fund side for activities specifically supporting the ERA function. We have transferred those between entities. They do have different bank accounts. They're not shared bank accounts. We do physically write a check from one to the other. But what we were missing was including that transfer back to the general fund from the ERA. So we were happy that as we were looking for every stone and making sure not there wasn't anything left unturned this year, that was a piece that helped our general fund to really ensure that we had that cost captured back on the ERA side. And you'll hear later tonight, the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the total we have budgeted next year for the personnel costs on the ERA side, and that's consistent with this current year. So those pieces helped our general fund to ensure that it's receiving the the money back that that it's owed to support some of these other functions. If we look at the general fund summary, we saw just a very, very high level of total revenues and expenses and that net result of operation. Just wanted to show it here again with that general fund reserve at the bottom. And so in the next couple of slides, I'd like to revisit the reserve conversation and make sure that we are including in the budget what's council's direction here. But with everything, we do a five-year budget. So what you'll see in the long-range plans for the general fund, what you'll see in the budget at your next council meeting, are those subsequent four years not being a balanced result of operations. So you can see that conditional formatting there showing the red. We instantly go from an eight thousand dollar positive surplus in this year's budget as we saw in our balancing act. It would be a negative four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for next year, all things consistent. We still have zero included in our asset management. We have nothing initially budgeted for for capital projects. But what we're seeing here is a three percent increase overall in our revenues and closer to a six percent increase in our expenditures. So we're, we were able to come balanced this year by reining in some of the supplies and services costs, by holding back on that, by being very, very intentional with the things that we were funding, not funding asset management. Every year, we're going to start at that unbalanced piece where unless something changes in our economic conditions, the revenues increasing at a smaller rate than our expenditures are projected to increase. So just wanted to kind of show what that looks like by the end of two thousand and thirty. That number is one point eight million dollars, if it's hard to to read in the color on the screen. Keeping at a current general fund reserve level of six million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you'll see in two thousand and twenty-nine and two thousand and thirty, we no longer would have available fund balance in excess of those reserves. So you wouldn't be able to hold the level of reserves in those two years that you are currently holding in two thousand and twenty-five. So think about some of those factors and, you know, the the picture's cloudier as we look out. And I could, I hope, for for many, many years, have the opportunity to present a balanced budget to council. It will get harder each year. So we're committed to to making the reductions necessary to make this work and continue to provide the best service we can to the community. We may be at a point where we would have to look at what services are not critical. How do we do things differently so that we can every year achieve that balanced budget? So I apologize for the bleak four-year forecast. We, it's important that we have our eye on that that five-year out, and it's something we can remain continued, remain committed to to working on. So let's go back to general fund reserve. When we spoke last, we talked about a couple of scenarios of what that might look like. Now that we have updated numbers, just wanted to bring it back and see what what thoughts still are. And so I have just kind of a couple of scenarios, if you will, here. So the ending fund balance, in any of these scenarios, we expect to be just shy of nine million dollars. This differs from our previous slides because we also have some committed dollars that are not available in our reserve. So they are in our reserve bucket, they're in our savings account, if you will, they are not available to be allocated. If we look at the reserve levels as a percentage of those prior year expenditures, I've written up everything from 32, 30 and 25. At that 32% level, that reserve dollar amount would be $7,250,000 would leave you an available fund balance of $1.7 million. This is something the council can choose to, to hold, to identify capital projects or, or one-time spending needs, whether that be equipment or project capital in nature, any of those one-time needs, city council could choose to fund those. We could still include those in the budget. You could look at them at any point, or you could choose to, to hold them. At a 30% level, that dollar amount, instead of being 7.25 million, would be half a million dollars less, so 6.75. And that's the dollar amount that was in your current year budget would give your available fund balance, balance, sorry, up to 2.2 million dollars. So you would gain an additional half a million dollars by bringing that down from 32 to 30% level. If you wanted to look at that minimum level of 25%, that reserve that we would hold then would be 5.75 million, would give an available fund balance of 3.2 million and would give you an additional million on top of the, the 30, going from the 30% to the 25%. So if you looked at going from a 32% to 25, you would have an additional 1.5 million dollars. If that reserve was, was reduced. These are all, all options for, for council. As I mentioned, your 2025 budget, you have that 6.75 million dollar level currently, but it equated to a 32% or 36% level of prior year operating expense. So every year as that operating expense total becomes more expensive, it'll change that percentage amount also. So you can look at it from percentage amount that you might be comfortable with, or you can look at it from dollar amount that you might be comfortable with. And I think at our prior conversation, we maybe had differing viewpoints on where those comfort levels lie. And so really I just have a summary level slide that we'll, we'll talk about after this piece. So give some thoughts to that because I hope this is the majority of the questions here. And then ultimately what, what we'll be showing in the October 7th consideration of the budget is a total citywide budget that has almost $54 million. So pretty cool. When you look at all of the, the revenue that we anticipate coming in from all of the funds citywide, you know, those enterprise funds on their own are $19 million. So pretty, pretty neat to see some of these dollars. Total dispersments, everything out that we anticipate spending citywide, 62.275 million dollars. We are investing a lot of money in capital. Yep, I see some, some scratches, some confused faces. When we look citywide, the dispersments are exceeding the revenues because we are using fund balance held in our capital projects funds and our enterprise funds for the nature of capital projects. So the general fund, operating revenues have to pay for those operating expenses. Citywide, we're able to hold those, those fund balances for those larger one-time projects. So ending fund balance, our city will end with a fund balance total wide or total cash balance of about $28.6 million. So still, still very strong, still a budget I hope the city council is proud of. There's a lot of great work in here. We'll share those capital summaries again. We're working on getting those one-page views ready for everybody to get rolling right away in January on those capital projects. There's still a ton of work to be done and a lot of great projects are being funded in next year's budget thanks to those capital projects funds and those enterprise funds. And the work continues on the general fund. But with that, I'd happy to open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. Can you just for the record, let those that are at home or in the audience listening to this presentation, the budget also includes anticipated revenues from development that is currently coming, anticipated coming in like McDonald's, Murphy's, all that stuff. So that's also included in the budget, correct?
It is absolutely. Any other development that we, we know it's well underway is included in the budget. Some development that we think might still come in, we don't include in our current budget, but those items, absolutely.
Okay. Cause I know there's some people out there that says, why are you including, and that's just for them to know, yes, we are including that in the budget as well. So thank you for being really candid about the, the needs for the revenue as we can see going into 27 and, and beyond that that number is not going to get any smaller and it's, we're going to start having deficits. I, I know over the years, I, I know you and your staff are miracle workers. I'm making this budget work. I don't know how you do it, but you guys do a fantastic job. We make a lot of cuts to supplies and services. We make a lot of cuts in other areas. When is enough, enough of the cuts and we just can't do it anymore? What, are we to that point starting next year? That's what it looks like from that.
You know, I think we're, we're very, very close and actually had a conversation before this session with another department head that said, hey, it's going to be really, really important when we speak to city council about our strategic operations, that we have conversations like, should we stop doing X? Is this a value service? Is this a necessity or is it a nice to have? And where is that level on ensuring that your vision for the community is matching how we continue to do those operations? So yeah, we're, we're very close to having those hard conversations.
That's perfect because that's exactly where I was going to lead going with this whole thing. Okay. So that, now we got that out of the way and everything because here, here's my, here's my, here's my look at this. You've identified that there's a lot of capital improvement projects that need to be done. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. And I know by reducing our reserves and it's hard to make that up, but it sounds like what we're trying to do, this council, what we've been trying to do is get ahead of that and make sure we're doing our maintenance. We're making sure that we have the equipment that we need to provide services to the community. And I, what I don't want to do is kick that down the line again, like it's been done for so many years in the past. And we wind up back five years, 10 years from now going, oh, now we're in a deferred maintenance again. We don't have the money to fix it. That's why these, everything else is falling apart. As much as I don't like to, I think maybe reducing the, the reserve maybe about 5% and putting some of that money to, to use for that type of capital assets. The projects would really get and maintenance would help, but I don't want to also reduce it too far. Also talking about the mill, I think it's still definitely advantageous of us to continue to have that conversation with the public. I know we are looking at 7.5 originally over phased in over three years. Can the mill be split up? And what I mean by that is if you take 7.5 and you say put 2.5 mills to the police department, 2.5 to the general fund, 2.5 to another area. Can that be done or does that all have to go tie into the general fund?
My understanding and maybe Drew will kick me if I, if I misspeak, if you know differently. My understanding for property taxes, those are general dollars that the city can then utilize as they see fit. The sales taxes that might be dedicated for a specific item, I think the sales taxes are tied more directly to being identified for specific items. I, I believe at any point we could ask for a mill levy increase to support many different things with the intention of those specific dollars going towards those functions. And then that's on us to ensure that we're spending the dollars and reporting that we're spending those dollars according to the voters' wishes. But I don't believe that there is the division of specific mills for specific purposes.
And the reason why I ask that, I've, I've been asked that question is like, well, if you could show us what those mills would be utilized for, maybe we would consider that. But since you can't show it other than it's going to go into the general fund, well, why would we want to do that? And that, that, that was that, it was like, well, you know, because most of the stuff that we operate comes out of the general fund. So thanks for that clarification on that. But I do want to say that I'm really, I mean, you guys do a great job. I don't know how you pull this off. I mean, I'm glad to see that we're $8,000. That's, that's fine. But you guys do a fantastic job. I appreciate what you guys do. I know it's getting harder and harder. But I think this is something that when we talk in the strategic retreat, we're going to have to really look at exactly what we talked about earlier. So thank you. Appreciate it.
So on the general fund asset management, you had said that we always put zero on there, right?
No, we usually have something funded in the asset management. At least if it's a couple, it's a zero for this, this year. I left it in the model to show zero so that you could say, no, there should be some spending here.
Okay. On average, the last few years, what have we spent in that area? Because I know we have bought equipment as needed, things like that. And where I'm looking is actually the opposite, is trying to save more, going from 36%. Cause we used to be at, I want to say 50% of what we would save. And it sounds like we need to be building up that savings because once that money is gone, it's hard to replace. So I was just wondering with the general fund asset management, what is our yearly average for the last few years?
Yeah, definitely. So we've spent in the, the high 300s to high $400,000 range for many, many years. And you know, that tried to accomplish at least a couple of police car ordering plus a couple of other pieces of equipment. We did spend more in 2025. Our initial budget started with just $153,000. Council did increase that to 1.3 million dollars as we looked at spending more of those reserves in the one-time funding this spring. And then as a reminder, your capital budget this year is 9.9 million dollars in addition to the $3 million that we had set for the police station as well. So a larger dollar amount of spending was allocated in 2025 for asset management and capital projects than we had done in maybe a historical past. So a lot this, this past year. And, and you're right, I, you both are right, the, the dollar amounts and being able to spend for additional capital projects out of the fund balance is important. Cody and I had a conversation last week though, about the magnitude of the cost of projects. And so we were looking at various roadway improvements, different repairs, you know, we're looking pretty easily at 1.8 million dollars, $3 million, $5 million. And so I think it'll be really important for council to say, these monies should fix X instead of just, you know, oh, we should do something with this. Because you're right, it's, it's very, very, very hard and it doesn't look like we will replenish those dollars, at least in our five-year.
And to clarify for the public, when we do that general fund asset management, when we do that increase, that comes from those savings dollars, right?
Savings dollars and revenue, unanticipated revenue that we might get in. We've received last year a large amount of oil and gas royalty money, years that we have had larger distributions from severance taxes and federal mineral use income. Those are, are dollars that are unanticipated in our budget that we have put back into work for capital projects.
Thank you for the clarification.
So on your point, I agree with you on that, that we should try to, but at the same time, if we continue to build those reserves because it's hard to replace and we just were right back in the same position that we're trying to avoid deferred this, deferred that, deferred that, and things just crumble. And then in the long run, it costs more and instead of spending what we can to fix it, now we're just making it five times more expensive down the line.
Which I understand, but unless we get an increase, we're going to.
Or that hard decision about maybe some things have to be cut around.
Hi, thanks for presentation. So cheerful. So with $8,000, how are we going to pay for a budget revision that requires us to go up?
Unanticipated revenues.
Okay. What if we don't get those?
If we don't get those, then that's why we run the lean budget and the realistic forecasts that we try to put together. If we don't have them, we don't have the extras. And if we do and we're, we're lucky enough to have interest income that's, that's higher, we'll see what the market continues to do for the rest of the year on oil and gas boom, and we have larger amounts of distribution. Any of those dollars that come in that we are not relying on to pay our bills will be things that we can look at doing different things with.
Okay. So let me rephrase my question. I'm not asking about extras. I'm asking about what happens if a construction project goes 1% over and it's $20,000 more.
The real reason is, excuse me, the real answer is we would look always at our internal current year budget to see what savings might exist to be able to pay for a need that is happening now that we didn't anticipate. There's always changing priorities there. And if not, we would be coming to council to ask for usage of the general fund reserves.
Okay. Didn't the ERA give us like a lot of money for the closure of lot one, for the selling of lot one?
You're stealing my thunder for the ERA budget. No, the recommendation from staff is to hold that in the ERA for this year. So that when other development projects come up, ERA has the funding available to continue to use that. So we have not transferred the proceeds of lot one sale on the ERA back to the general fund. The general fund did pay 1.8 million dollars for the roadway construction there at the junction. And that will be paid back to the city in sales tax increment that the ERA is currently receiving and will continue to receive more as that redevelops. So it's dollars, sales tax dollars that the general fund can keep that would otherwise be an opportunity for the ERA to use those because the ERA is paying back that debt that the city paid to construct that roadway. Our hope is for the future sales of the other remaining lots in the ERA is those are dollars that can quickly come back to the general fund if there's not redevelopment projects that need that.
Okay. And then my final question, and this is where accounting magic is strange in my mind. Why do we get 500K for 2%, but only a million for 7%? Seems like we should get 1.5 plus million.
That percentage is based on a percentage of prior operating expenditures. So you would have to redo that calculation every time to see what that new dollar amount is compared to the operating expenses. So if you did that calculation each time, you would see that the dollar.
So is there diminishing returns?
I don't know that I would say that.
Well, because I'm risking five more percent and only getting an extra half a million dollars. But if I only do the first 2%, then it's, I get $500,000.
I can see your point.
Okay. So just because we do need to put our hats in the ring, I am completely good with maintaining the reserves as is or going to that 30%. But if we're only going to get an extra $500,000, I don't want to do taking it all the way down to the statutory minimum. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that. I would do no more than that 30%, no less than that 30% and put that half a million dollars to work.
I also want to echo that I appreciate the presentation. It was very thorough and just well explained and I was able to follow it. And I think, and I hope everyone that's watching also is able to follow it. I also would not like to go any less than 30% myself. I think 25 is too low. But also with, you know, these conversations that we're having, I, we clearly need to bring more business. We definitely need to get out and start really kind of fast-tracking our economic development. Just get, bringing people, enticing whatever that looks like, because right now we're speaking of things just staying the way they are in a sense. And we need to do something to bring in funds. Yes, it looks bleak, but we also need to have those solutions and start getting out there to do something. Cause our city, I mean, we have so much space. We have, you know, the ability to do more within our community. We just need to get out there, whatever that looks like. Granted, I know you all know this, but it's just, we definitely need to hit the floor running and ensuring that we're able to get in those, like sit at those tables, go to those places where people are speaking about, you know, new businesses or bringing X or franchises, what have you. We need to be in those spaces.
Staff is, Brian and his team are doing a great job of that.
Like I mentioned, I'm not saying that that's not happening. I'm just, you know, kind of stating it out loud. Those things need to happen. Cause I mean, we're speaking of again, the budget, things remaining the same. But also there's solutions to be had which are happening, but it's just putting it on the record. But yeah, 30, we definitely need to start, you know, thinking about the mill levy and, you know, soon as well to see what that looks like for us. And I appreciate all the cuts and, you know, balancing the budget and everyone having to make those choices within the city. They're hard. within the city. They're hard. Um, but I hope that in the next couple of years, things will change, you know, dependent on, you know, what we do as a council. New councils that come in, you know, um, that we um definitely think and consider about, consider our budget. So thirty percent, that's the lowest I would go.
Great presentation. Your team is phenomenal. Uh, the budget's crystal clear. I have zero questions. Uh, I know where, I can read this and I know where we're headed and it's not great. I would, if this was a business, I would start an exit strategy at this point, but I know that this isn't the business. The hardship is we're dealing with a lot of human elements that the hard decisions are going to have to be made. And I wish that we could get past the rut of not wanting to change anything. And if we could just get through just a little bit more of a mill, we could overcome this hurdle. We, everyone wants to not change, but the world is changing around us and everything's getting more expensive. And I don't want us to change our reserves because we're not helping ourselves. We're eroding away at our safety net. And the more we erode away, we're just putting ourselves at more of a financial risk. And we are giving ourselves long term false hope. And I would want that forty percent, but we can't build it up because now we're deferring maintenance. And we can't expect our team to do a quality job without the tools to do the work. And so we're going to need to drop to thirty percent to give them the capital to do the job. I wish that our residents would realize that we just need a little bit more to do our job. And if we can be proactive and get out there and have our residents understand this. What I'm fearful by looking at this as a financial economist, I'm seeing that we're going to end up being reactive. And it's going to eventually become so eroded away that it'll take us a decade to, two decades to ever be able to build back up. And at that point, I don't want to be the doomsayer. And we're, and this isn't a doomsayer conversation, but we can, we can make a change now. And this is the pivot point. This isn't bad. We just need to put the boots to the ground and make it happen, but this isn't. You can make a change now, but if this was a business, I would start the exit strategy.
Yeah, thank you, Member. Councilmember Crabtree, I um, I fully agree. I I don't want to reduce our our reserves at all. The, looking at the the forecast in the next five years, we're in the best of those five years right now. Um, so I don't want to dip into our savings account when we're in the best position we're probably going to be in for a bit. Um, and it it does, looking at the graph, it does make it look like next year is kind of the year that we drop off the cliff and start falling into the hole, I guess, but we're already there. Um, I don't think that I feel comfortable, excuse me, approving a budget with zero asset management and uh and cutting down our operations and police departments uh asset management to 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 zero. Um, that is i- in itself incurring debts. Um, like you're saying that those vehicles need to be replaced every year. We are falling behind. So um, we're definitely, we're at the point this year, um, and with this budget of looking at cutting some non-essential services, I think, as a city is all we got.
Councilmember Neil.
Well, it's caught up with us. The years of neglect and ignoring maintenance have caught up with us. And if we had another downturn, um, like the, like uh Mayor Alzigler faced, we'd be cutting staff again and uh getting more and more complaints, citizen complaints about things not being done. And I am not in favor of lowering the the reserves anymore either. Um. It should have been probably dug into years ago to it's much easier to do the maintenance on things rather than have to buy new replace it, replace the engines. If you own a car, you, if you don't change your oil, it's not going to last for long. And this is, this is what the city has been doing where is constantly saying, we can't afford it, but they never planned to try to do something about it. This council is trying to plan and from, we're behind the eight ball, Phil. Uh, it's, it's almost too late to do anything, but we're trying. And that's all we can do is try to, to, and we need, we need to convince the voters that we need more revenue. And it's we, the people that provide that. It's not the government, it's we, the people. We are the ones who have to come, come up with the money to do it. And unfortunately, it's going to cost a lot more because of all, you know, the forty six years that I've lived here. They've ignored it.
Good.
Uh, to the point of council member effort, with the asset management, we had never I don't recall in the past, um, having like a specific amount every month. It was kind of like you mentioned, always with severance or like any revenue that we get. So in essence, we, I, just so I'm clear, did we always start at zero, zero, or was there a some, some amount?
Most years we had at least a couple of hundred thousand of dollars or at least a hundred thousand, two, three, somewheres in that neighborhood to at least.
Was it because we already had something slated? Or because that was like what we allocated for that specific?
Just available budget allowed us to fund a couple of the highest needs and they were oftentimes replacement, police cars plus operations vehicles or pieces of equipment. So we just had room in the budget to be able to fund those things um, right away in that original budget rather than having to wait to see if we received any additional revenue.
This is, this is the first time ever that we've had zero and are hoping that we get additional money.
So
But again, this is
Sorry. So I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is like we do have some available fund balance. So although yes, it's zero just on paper because we needed to balance it, it's zero. But there's the ability to provide monies for it is what I'm getting at.
Yes, there still is room in that available fund balance for council to identify or allocate money in this initial twenty twenty six budget for those kind of one time costs. So separate from ongoing operational costs, but those one time equipment, um, capital project costs, yes.
Okay, good. Because I just wanted to make sure because I'm like, yes, it's zero, but we have available fund balance. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But the budget's balanced and if we take from one pot, we have to decrease from the other pot. And so there's where the adequacy is. But if we reduce the reserve by five hundred thousand, then we or reduce the reserve, then we can take the five hundred thousand and fictitiously, I'm just making this up. We can put two fifty into pot one, two fifty into pot two. And then we could also do nothing and hope that revenue or oil and gas comes up and then we could reactively fund things as they come through.
But I'm, I guess what I'm getting at, although it's zero, it doesn't, right now, because obviously in future years, it's looking different. But again, that's the reason we're having the conversation in regards to the percentage, you know, so and that provides available funding for that, but it's dependent on whether we feel we, we go down to thirty or we remain the same because that that will change this conversation.
Or if you don't, where you cut from to make up. So you have to cut from somewhere if we don't do anything.
And all the department heads have already approved their pots of gold. So we don't really want to dabble in their.
No.
Yeah, I'm approved is a
Yeah, I know loosely.
Uh, some of them are happy about it.
They're not very happy about.
No, I'm not anybody's best friend right now. Um, but just, just so that we're clear, as we're talking about these dollars, yes, to all of your points, I think you're saying the same thing in in different ways or in many words, which is so great. Um, the ending fund balance, though, for this year is that nine point one nine two million dollar number. So at the end of the day, that is what the general fund has in its savings account with this barely balanced budget approved. How you choose to split those out into fund balance and available fund balance or should you choose to allocate some of that available fund balance and fund something else? Yes, as long as I just want to make sure we're all looking at that nine million dollars as the total, just how.
Another thing, just for clarification purposes, granted, I know we're, we're speaking of the percentage that we want to bring down per year, you know, coming, you know, next year and the following years, right? But it's not like, so every year we have the ability of replenishing the, this, um, the, the, um, reserve correct, or does it stay stagnant every single year? So it carries over or does it, do we have enough to replenish it to where it was with whatever, um, funding we get?
Yeah, great, great question. Thank you for, for asking it in that way. So look at the very top line of this budget here as we're looking at the beginning fund balance. You'll see our next year budget anticipates us starting with about nine point two million dollars and you'll see that top number going down. So every year we have less money in our savings account because the available fund balance at the very bottom of the chart starts to go negative. So we are not replenishing that. The reality is we are only adding to that fund balance or our savings account this year by the eight thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars, unless we have additional unbudgeted revenues. But no, the straight budgeting forecast will show that diminishing and not replenishing.
So even if you get additional to, like what it was expected, would it get replenished?
That would, yep. Any unanticipated unbudgeted revenues then would add to that bottom line and that would help to replenish it, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, a few quick questions. Last year, that eight thousand dollars that we're eking by with right now, that was about two forty if I'm correct. Is that correct?
Sixty nine thousand and one.
Sixty nine thousand and one. So we're, our biggest thing that we need to think about right now is what we do want to do with the reserves this year. My question is, based on magical accounting money, if we only did one percent, that would change it from five hundred thousand to maybe three hundred thousand because we haven't done the
Yeah, any of those, any of these factors, um, you know, the our projected, our operating expenditures, so it's a percentage of twenty two million, six hundred and thirty one thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars. So everything we're looking at in that percentage amount is we look back to our twenty twenty five projected operating expenses, making sure what that level is. So capital's not changing that. So yeah, what, really just modeling the five percent to give you some illustration. Welcome to have any.
I guess my thing is, is if we do one percent and let's say it's not magical money and we get two fifty, exactly. I, well, I want to minimize a risk and it just seems like we could say right now, we don't like the zero in assets. We obviously have a semi-approved pot of money. Um, so we could take that thirty two percent, not go all the way even to thirty percent, just go thirty one percent and that extra, whatever it ends up being, two fifty, we'll call it, can be just set aside for when we identify things in the budget next year.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm good.
I don't know.
That's a good idea.
Thank you for thinking that through.
Good idea. I don't have a problem with that.
I would say for me, that that still doesn't really change anything. Unless I can hear like a firm commitment from the rest of council that we do want to pursue a mill levy campaign next year of some sort. I know we're going to have our strategic discussions here coming up soon, so.
I think that would be a conversation to have in the
Yeah, it's still just, it still is, what I see, I still see it as putting a Band-Aid on something that like is, is gonna be ripped off next year and continue bleeding. So it, um, I really think we need to start making changes now, um, because we, we are, we're going into the hole already.
Barely there.
Right. And like I said, so just dipping into our savings in any way, shape or form, now we're in the best position we're going to be in for the next five years. So I just, I just can't justify it one way or another. We need to start making changes to how we're, we're operating.
I agree with that, but I think our first hurdle is getting the one percent passed because if that doesn't pass, then things look different.
So I'm, I'm hearing one for one, going down to thirty one percent.
One percent, two percent doesn't matter. I have any reasons with you. At this point.
So one, Ally, Councilmember Johnson.
As I mentioned, I, I wouldn't go lower than thirty.
No, not what's
No, we're thirty one percent. For, for dropping down to one percent, hopefully get two hundred and fifty and at least have that set aside if we don't have any additional revenue for asset management.
I think anticipating what or knowing what we have going on, it is important for us to go up to the thirty. Just with everything that's going on, if we want to at least fix certain things that are needed, that would help.
Councilmember Neil.
Well, I think we've been slowly sinking into the quagmire from uh neglect and ignored maintenance and it's caught up with us and we're fighting an uphill ba- battle to get out of the quicksand. And I'm not so sure that half a million dollars is going to help us much. And I don't, definitely don't want to leave the next council with no reserve. Because they have to maintain that twenty five percent reserves and by the state mandate. Unless they're really something drastic happens. And we're all aware that there are things that can happen overnight. So I'm not in favor of lowering it much more because I, I really don't think that that half a million dollars is going to help us out much.
So, so are you saying no then to any of that or keep it what it is?
Keep it what it is.
Okay.
That's where I'm at. Keep it as it is.
Okay. Well, the majority does, wants to keep it where it is. So there you go.
Thank you very much for those questions in the direction.
That it?
That's all.
That's it? Okay, all right. Well, great job. I appreciate it. Thanks for all your hard work. Thanks to your team for all their hard work. We really appreciate it. You guys are awesome. Miracle workers for sure. All right, next on our agenda is the wastewater treatment plant expansion, September twenty twenty five update.
Yes, Mayor and Council, while everybody's coming up here, I'll go ahead and um provide a quick intro. If you thought the last discussion was fun, buckle up. Uh, this is going to get interesting. If you recall back to January twenty twenty four, we entered into a contract with uh A E two S to serve as our design engineering consultant for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plan improvements. And so where we're at now uh with this project is we've made it through to thirty percent design, uh, the, the team has done a lot of validating the wastewater utility master plan. Uh, reevaluating uh population densities, growth projections, stuff of that nature. And then evaluating a number of different technologies uh for solids and liquids uh uh processing, treatment processing. So tonight, what we're here to do is we're here to provide the city council with an update, uh, what thirty percent looks like, but also start laying out a roadmap for the, for the thirty to one hundred percent design. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Public Works Director Ty Boreski for additional comments.
Thank you and thanks for the good introduction, Cody. Um, so we have, we have a team here to answer some questions. Um, Phil, with a Um, Phil with AE2S is going to lead a presentation. We have our owners who are up with the Tesco and we have Robbie here, so, um, together we, we should have questions. We'll kind of cycle through as you have questions that, that fit the right person here. Um, but for now, I'll turn it over to Phil and we'll start the presentation.
Thank you very much, Ty. Um, the title of our presentation today is where we are, where we've been and where we're headed. So it's a recap of literally what we've done since we engaged on your project. So let's kind of start with our timeline here and this is going to focus on where we've been and where we are. So, uh, almost a year ago now, we first engaged with your community to address some issues at your wastewater plant. And that was all funded, founded around the fact that you guys were reaching eighty percent of your permitted capacity at the plant. So we started working with you guys to understand what's going on out here. And what we discovered was that through our process modeling, you have some additional liquid treatment capacity that is sitting there and it's going to buy you about another five to eight years before you actually need to do an expansion at that facility. But what it means that needs to be done right now is a paper rerating. And we do that through explaining our calculations and so forth to the public health department that that capacity is sitting there. And that's verified and backed up by the awesome, uh, operational record that has been developed by Robbie and his team over the last four years. What that's all, helped, allowed us to do then is shift our focus from a liquid stream treatment capacity to a highly desired and much needed solids project. And so what we're looking to do as kind of the big heart of this project coming up is to decommission the anaerobic lagoons that are out there right now and go to ATAD, autothermal thermophilic aerobic digestion. That's going to help us offset the amount of biosolids that we're disposing of. It's going to help o- lower our, our long-term operating costs. That's kind of in a nutshell, what we figured out in the very early stages of, of our analysis. And through that, in working with the team, we needed to go through interfacing with the North Front Range Water Quality Planning Association in addressing the needs at the plant, which trickled down into looking at your two oh eight wastewater planning boundary. And so we were instrumental in helping to work with what that boundary needs to look, look like. We actually found some areas that, uh, necessar- required us to go back and revisit intergovernmental agreements with the city of Greeley for some areas that are outside of the two eight boundary that have been historically served by your city itself. And so along all this way, we've just been figuring out what do we need to do? How do we best spend the dollars a- all along the way? And that brings us to where we're kind of at today in a thirty percent design. Um, so that is our presentation here today. Our immediate next steps are to go into what's called a sixty percent design level. So we're going to advance the details of the do- design around the specific upgrades that we're going to look at doing. In parallel with that, we are also going to be going through a C Mar solicitation step. So we're going to request, uh, some proposals from some C Mar people to come in and be a part of our team to be integral with us. They will help us understand some of the nuances around construction. They'll have a better feel for what prices are in the marketplace, so they'll help us be more accurate with cost estimating. And we'll also collaboratively work together to find a- areas where we can actually do some value engineering. Help make things more cost efficient, uh, along the way as well. You'll see also at that sixty percent design, uh, milestone there, very close, we're going to be also submitting the paperwork for the rerating of the plant to the, the public health department. So with that, where are we headed? So near term, once we reach that sixty percent milestone, we're going to be then advancing the project into the ninety percent design phase. So we're going to work on the very, very fine details of the design. C Mar is on board, so they're in the pre-construction, we're going through the V E workshop that I had mentioned just previously, uh, kind of at the forefront of that design effort. And then we get to a ninety percent review workshop. And then we do a constructibility review where we actually have independent people who are in our industry and very experienced in looking at documents to make sure that they're readable, they're legible. They actually help the contractors construct the work, construct the work. And that's all focused around driving down change orders and cost of projects at the end of the day. You'll see that once we reach that design milestone, then we will, we are planning to come back and give you guys project status updates along the way. We will be submitting di- design documents along with SRSF funding application. Uh, there towards the end of Q two in twenty twenty six. Um, we're looking and hoping to get some funding from SRF to help offset the costs. And then we're anticipating beginning the actual C Mar construction, uh, at the end of Q three. And having a completed facility upgrades by the end of Q three in twenty twenty seven. Where are we headed long term? So this is just the first part of the overall planning and upgrades for your facility. So this initial step is going to address solids, is going to address some optimization with your existing plant with aeration and given the, the guys, the tools, they need to keep doing an awesome job and delaying when we need to do this next phase two, which is the hydraulic and the organic upgrades that we thought we were going to do when we first got engaged with you guys. So we're, we're projecting that the design effort of that would start around twenty thirty four and around the beginning of twenty thirty five, and we would have about a year worth of construction after that. That will address hydraulic capacity, organic capacity. So you're talking about, you know, adding treatment trains to the liquid treatment stream. You're talking about doing things like process intensification, so doing more work in the same volume, things of that nature. After you're done with the phase two, then we're talking about phase three. And phase three is looking longer term, right? So phase three is really about regulation thirty eight and what we're seeing being implemented as water quality goals for the South Platte River. So these are things that are focusing on like selenium and other metals that are, you know, contaminants within that water stream. We're talking about going to very, very low nutrient limits with total nitrogen as, as our goal is what we're doing out there, total phosphorus is a nutrient goal. So that's very long-term planning, um, that is looking to be implemented around the twenty thirty nine timeframe. And then again, about a year's worth of construction. So let's talk a little bit more about what all is included in this phase one. So as I mentioned, it's kind of two things here, it's process optimization and it's solids processing. So we're looking at doing upgrades at your headworks facility with some screening and some other, some nuances there, we've got some microbial corrosion that's, that's eating on electrical gear. We've got VFDs that are failing and so forth, so we're looking at addressing some of that stuff. You know, the gases that are in those spaces, as I mentioned the last time we were here before, uh, with council, they create a hazardous condition for the, the operators that are in those spaces who are looking to mitigate those issues as well. Influ flow equalization, pH adjustment and fog, fats, oils and grease. So one of the new pieces of instruct, infrastructure that we're planning to do is this influent EQ basin. What this is doing is it's creating a working volume after the headworks and prior to the secondary treatment basins to allow us to even out the flows. This is a critical piece to our overall strategy because by doing this, we can actually increase our treatment capacity at your facility. So this is a part of our strategy for delaying some of those phase two and phase three projects down the road. Secondary aeration, aeration treatment basins. So we're looking at automating the aeration valves on each of the drops. We're looking at optimizing the work we can actually accomplish with the infrastructure that's largely, largely in place there right now. Secondary clarifiers are severely corroded, they need to be replaced. The laundry covers over the effluent troughs are adding to a significant midge infesting, infestation in your disinfection buildings. We're looking at pulling those off. To address freezing issues in the winter, we are hoping to be able to cover those, those secondary clarifiers. So that does two things. It mitigates the ice buildup that jacks with the scum arm and gets things out of whack that requires the clarifier mech, uh, mechanics to come back out and reset. And it also addresses the ability for midges and the bugs to get into that space and get into the disinfection buildings. Uh, the RazWaz pumping, so one of the things that is an issue is Robbie and his team cannot balance the flow and the solids coming from each of the secondary clarifiers and returning it back to the head of the facility. So we're looking at putting in flow meters and automated valves to give him that operational clo- operational flexibility that'll help him to optimize that process and optimize the, the facility that he's operating right now. Disinfection, we've got a third channel there, we're looking to outfit it with, with the third UV disinfection system to increase that treat, that disinfection treatment capacity. Already touched on electrical and HVAC, we've got the, the VFD issues, we, we've got the corrosive gases, we've got that microbial induced corrosion going on, we're looking at addressing all of those. Microbial corrosion also dovetails into odor control. We are of the opinion that by decommissioning the anaerobic lagoons and going to the solids processing, the odors and the complaints from the community, from the odors are going to be largely addressed through that upgrade alone. But there are still opportunities to address odors within the rest of the facility. Right now, the activated carbon odor control system in the headworks needs to have the carbon replaced. So we've got that on, on schedule. We're also looking at another technology that can do double duty with odor control as well as microbial corrosion. And that's called air ionization. And so this is a technology that actually utilizes an electrical current to charge oxygen particles that then oxidize the odorous forming compounds and limits corrosion that way. So we'll see if we can be able to get into the project or not, that's a, that's a decision that's yet to be made. And there's always ongoing, you know, O and M. Refurbishment, replacement of coatings needs, needs to happen. We've, we just touched on the clarifiers, we have some pinholes and some other, uh, coatings that are failing on, on pipes. And so we need to do some, some O and M out there as well. Then, as I mentioned, the solids processing, the ATAD system. And as we were laying out the site and so forth, uh, became apparent that, um, currently the dredging operations of the anaerobic lagoons has a roadway that passes through a property that is immediately to the west of the proper, what I call the proper, the northern portion of the wastewater plant site. So, um, the, the short of the conversation is, is we need to get a road right away uh, for permanent access on the west side to be able to, uh, get track, truck traffic in and deal with the biosolids that we're going to be creating with the, uh, new project. And our next slide, so what is phase two? So phase two, as we mentioned, is hydraulic and organic, uh, expansion. This is largely driven by some of the figures you'll look at in the, the upper right hand corner here. So it's kind of an even distribution of population growth, stringent regulations and on, ongoing O and M. So this phase is looking at headworks and preliminary treatment. We need to increase hydraulic capacity within that part of the treatment stream. We need to look at increasing our treatment capability within the liquid stream. And so the secondary treatment process is intensification. As I mentioned, when we got going with you guys, we sat down and thought we were doing a liquid treatment expansion project. And so we looked at six different technologies for doing that expansion and we arrived at MBR. So this is membrane treatment technology for intensification as being the best result and getting you set up for compliance with Reg thirty eight down the, down the line. Along with this beco- comes the tertiary treatment. You guys heard me talk about metals and what's happening with Reg thirty eight. So we, our best crystal ball with what's happening at, uh, the state health department level right now, we think that arsenic, cadmium and selenium within this timeframe are probably going to be the parameters you're going to be looking at. And that's going to drive you towards some sort of tertiary treatment. Your population is increasing, your flows are increasing, these disinfections got to go up as well. Again, ongoing O and M, replacement of co- coatings, pipe fittings, pumps and equipment that are going to be at the inner, their, their useful life are also going to be, uh, included in the phase two. So with all of this, I mean, what could be left for phase three, right? Well, let's, let's see. So phase three is Reg thirty eight and non-pollable reuse. So at this point, we're looking at some additional metals coming on, uh, for CDPHE being copper, zinc, zinc, silver, sulfide and non-phenols. And you're doing tertiary filtration at this point. So I think there is a conversation to be had about non-pollable reuse, whether, and it's going to depend largely upon your water rights. I understand that you guys have water rights, so you really treat your water and provide it to you. I don't know, know much more about the specifics beyond that, but with the level of treatment that the regulations are driving us to, there is a conversation to be had around the possibility of going to that use for water. Again, ongoing maintenance. You can see at this stage, population growth is a bigger circle. So it's more heavily driven by population growth here than what we think is being stringent regulations and O and M. And so this is kind of our concept. We've got a site plan that's, that's, that's kind of laid out here. So you can see the Western Axis Road on the far left-hand side there at the southern portion. You can kind of see in the middle there, that is the footprint of the solids building. Let's see if I can get a pointer to go, maybe. So there's your solids building right there, there's your Western Axis Road. This here is the new influent EQ pumping station. ATAD produces some very nasty odorous smells. All of these tanks that are a part of this are completely enclosed. The, oh, I'm sorry. Um, the influent EQ tank here will be covered. This, what you see right here is a biofilter. We are going to be capturing all of those odorous compounds and treating them in that biofilter so that we are not going to have any complaints uh, going forth with the improvement projects that we're doing here. You'll also notice there's a very large area here of this, this weird hatchy here, that's concrete. So this ATAD process will reduce the total amount of solids we produce by about sixty percent. We have provided about a year's worth of s- storage here in this weird hatch to put the biosolids out and let them dry out and let them go through a freeze, freeze thaw cycle. By doing that, we actually allow them to release and get rid of, in what we call interstitial water that's bound up in the solids particle. That further reduces the volume. We can probably get to safely an eighty percent reduction in solids volume by doing that practice. That's continuing to drive down the amount of solids we're hauling off and what we're paying to haul them off. This process is also going to generate what's called a class A biosolid. Class A biosolids by definition under the state health department means we can actually have the most disposal options available. We can actually put them on food crops and that kind of, kind of thing. So we maximize their, their use within the environment. I think that's, covers pretty much everything for this slide. And so let's get into the particulars of the solids building. So this here, you can kind, see, we've got a holding tank here. And that's for the, for the solids that we're wasting from the liquid treatment process. We've got the ATAD reactor tank here and here, that's where the heart of the work is being done. This process is called autothermal thermophilic aerobic digestion because it requires oxygen for the process. We have blowers to supply, supply air. And it is autothermal because as the biology is actually consuming the food, it produces heat and energy. And within these tanks, we're harvesting that energy. And so the, the temperature is actually going to rise to anywhere between fifty and seventy degrees Celsius in those tanks. That's how we get the pathogen reduction and destruction through the process and get, and create that class A biosolid. Because it gets so hot, when we are finished doing our digestion, we have to actually cool it back down. So we have a heat exchanger for doing that before we send the, the remains into what's called our storage nitrification, denitrification tank. The ATAD process is going to generate very high loads of ammonia that we need to then remove. And we're going to do it biologically before returning flows back to the head of the pro- process. So that's what that storage nitrification, denitrification tank is going to do. We're going to basically remove the nitrogen compounds before we send it back to the head of the plant. And we have a return tank that is going to allow us to. And we have a return tank that is going to allow us to basically equalize flows out. So we return it back at a much reduced rate, so we're not shock loading the liquid treatment system again. As a part of this, we have chemical feed systems. We have thickening, so we actually need to get the solids content higher before we actually feed the ATAD reactors. We have a loading bay here. This is where we can load semis and so forth with the biosolids to haul them off, or we can drop them on the ground and go out and spread them on our pad. Gives us a great, a lot of great flexibility there. Up above this spot here, we actually have our dewatering equipment. There's there right now conceptualized around centrifuge dewatering technology. Speaking with Robbie, he's out of space of storage stuff for of for things. And so we've got a little garage area here for some storage. With this kind of process going on, we really need to have a laboratory space. You're going to need somebody that is full time in operating the system. And so we've got an office, we've got a lab space, and we've got a restroom here with a shower. Because when things go wrong and you get covered in the pervial mud, you want to get it off you. So we we're providing that flexibility as well. This is going to need to be a heated and cooled space. We are going to try and do our best with heat recovery systems. We're going to try and be green as green as possible. So conceptually, right now, that heat exchanger system, we're conceptualizing around the heat exchange medium being glycol and doing a glycol loop that we will use to preheat a head of your hot water tank for the mechanical purposes in this space, as well as a preheat in front of your air makeup unit. So that's going to help reduce the heat load or the gas load for heating up the space. Probably the biggest use that we're going to do is we're going to take that loop and run it through our WAZ holding tank to preheat the contents there. And by doing that, we're actually going to keep the the temperatures in the ATAD reactors elevated. So when we feed it, we're not feeding it a cold substrate. We're heating, we're going to feed it a warmer substrate, so it's actually going to work faster and better by doing that. I think I've covered pretty much most everything here. One thing to kind of maybe stick out for you is the the man space, the areas you can actually walk around and access in this this facility are over seventeen thousand square feet. So it's a lot of HVAC volume and stuff to kind of think about in that area. And here's kind of a sectional view. So this top section is if you're standing down in the pump gallery and you're looking towards the reactors. So things to kind of note within this space is this, from this floor to the top, that's about twenty five feet. The side water depth when these reactors are full are about twenty three feet of water depth. These boxes here, these are all your pumps. So ATAD requires you to mix. So we we are mixing using pumps and jet nozzles throughout those tanks to get all that mixing going on and get those bugs interacting with the food sources. The jets also serve for the aeration. So we put pressurized air into into an air beam that then injects the air at the outlet nozzle. And that creates the bubbles and transfers the oxygen to the source and mixes it. So that's how it does all the that gets all the air to the bugs and the food and whatnot going on in the reactor tanks. These little hatched boxes you see here, these are all the electrical panels that you need to stand in front of and operate your pumps and do all your stuff while you're standing there. You'll con- you'll see we've got a mezzanine level. So down here's where your feed pumps are for pulling out of your WAZ tank and going to your going to your thickeners. Up here is where you've got polymer sitting and feed pumps to go up to your centrifuges that are sitting up above and and dropping great right down into the loading bay. You'll notice there's a little, well, maybe not little, but there's a little, there's a notch here that's a little bit lower. That's a sump. And so we will have a sump that is going to serve to take all the floor drains, all the drains from your laboratory, your your shower, your bathroom area, all the equipment drains for the seal water, all the wash down, all the all the water that's coming off of your thickening equipment, your dewatering equipment, it's all going to that that sump right there, which is going to help us to then return it back to the in the new Influent EQ tank and back to your process. We're currently working on the hydraulic profile. If we can do it by gravity, we will. It's looking pretty tight right now. So we're right now, we're planning on needing to have a sump there. This section here is if you're standing down in that pump gallery and you're looking to the south. And so what you would see is we've got a dedicated stairway here that you would enter from the west side right by the loading bay. And so that's how you act can access all the various levels of that building. You can see there's a kind of blank space here, and that's right below your thickeners. And so that space is where we will have the thickened solids drop down and go to your, what we call T WAZ. So thickened WAZ pumps, those are the pumps that actually feed our ATAD reactors. So that's where they they're housed and where they live. You can see, you know, we step back up and then here's your lab space. Off to the right, we have your electrical room. We've got our blowers, and then here's here's your mechanical room. So that's that section that you're looking at there. Conceptually, we do need to think about getting equipment and chemicals and stuff in and out of the space. So what we're conceptualizing around is a bridge crane that runs the entire length of this this pump gallery. It'll help us get you your polymer totes and stuff over here into this space. Then the other big spot where we need to think about equipment handling and so forth are the centrifuges and the thickeners. And we're currently thinking monorails will be able to help us in in those areas right now. The HVAC, we are thinking will be rooftop mounted at this point in time. That helps, you know, free up space land down down at at the entry personnel entry level. We want to try and maximize that space to maintain as much area as we can to be available for biosolids drawing drawing, and so that's why we're conceptualizing around that right now. With that, that brings us to cost over time, and I'd like to hand this over to our colleague, Bill Rens.
And I'll just introduce Bill. So he's our our owner's rep. He's been working with us as our our advocate and helping to vet all the technical work, support Robbie and myself. And so he seemed like the most appropriate person to share some of the pricing. So thank you.
I volunteered for that. Thanks. And thanks for letting us walk through our work over the last year. I feel like we're in a good place to move forward, and we have some certainty on the technology and and the route. It is difficult to have cost certainty at this point based on the level of development and of the design and the market. Over the last couple of years, typically, we're able to use past costs for, you know, the last decade or so and inflate those. It's, I would say it's difficult to trust and apply anything prior to like twenty twenty two right now. So for phase one, twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and a portion of this currently, we're planning on Phil mentioned the state revolving loan fund would fund a good portion of this. So the remainder would be in that ten to fifteen million dollar range out of that thirty to thirty five. So the C Mar delivery that that Phil also mentioned is a really good approach for this type of work. If we have a combination of ATAD and facility, existing facility optimization projects, we're able to work with a contractor while they're on site and get more work done during that period if we do come up with savings during the work. So phase two, and we're projecting these next two phases based on what we know right now. These are in twenty twenty five dollars. The capacity increase, we're looking at a construction cost of roughly thirty million dollars that would entail an additional biological nutrient removal, aerated train, plus the process intensification that was previously mentioned. And then regulatory requirements. There's a good deal of uncertainty looking that far out to twenty forty, twenty forty one range. So this is a projection that we're using to communicate what what a long term plan would look like for future improvements. And I believe that is our last slide. If we have questions, it's probably a combination of myself and Phil.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate the update on that. So when you're talking about the cost for the twenty six, twenty seven, you said it was about thirty to thirty five, but there's some state revolving funds that can help offset the cost on that, correct?
Yes.
And is there any other additional funding out there from the state that also could further reduce those costs? I know Cody and I, you and I talked about that, and right now, from what I hear is the state just kind of laughed when we asked that question.
Yeah, I mean, A to S, we have a a whole division within our company that's does nothing but financing. And what the next kind of source that would potentially be out there is DOLA. But with what's happened with the SRF funds being gobbled up quite a bit, DOLA funds have been hit pretty hard, and we're hearing that there's not much there. Some other options would be WFI, but there are some drawbacks to those that funding as well.
So my other my my other thought is that this is I I know we don't have all that money in our our fund to build this. I guess this is something, another conversation we're going to have of how those rates are going to look to be passed along to our our residents, because I know there's going to have to be some cost about that, and that's not a pretty number, even with the state revolving fund that still drops it all into about seventy five million dollars. So it's going to conversation that we're going to have to have for our strategic planning and what that's going to look like, how to fund this project.
Yeah, yeah. In my economic development progress report, I'm finishing up for you guys. Wastewater treatment plants, it's a close tie between Mill Levy and wastewater treatment plant as huge obstacles we have to overcome in the very near future. I believe the SRF funds are capped at eighteen million, right? So there's, we're already, you know, running into limitations with that. We've reached out, we've tried to get some CDS funds directed towards this project from the federal government and haven't been successful at this point. So we are looking in a multitude of areas. I asked the Magic Eight Ball in my office before I came in here where the funding is going to come from, and it told me to come back later. So there there's definitely some challenges that we have to work through. Staffs, staffs doing their doing our diligence. I know that these are conversations that we're having internally, trying to figure out how to PC's together, but you can see twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven is coming up pretty quick. So we've we we certainly got our work cut out for us.
Well, hopefully in January, when some of those congressional spending start opening up, we can go that route. But for right now, this is going to be a another cost that our our residents are going to complain about already, the high cost of everything else that, you know, it's just another thing that needs to be could possibly be passed on, and it won't be pretty, so.
That I wanted to throw in there that we are at, we are towards the end of the implementation phase of our last wastewater rate study. And so what we need to be doing in the very, very near future is doing another rate study and determining what that looks like, because we know that the further that we get behind, the more that jump is going to be and the more frustrations that's going to create to provide an absolutely critical, absolutely essential service for the community. So that those are discussions we're going to have to have in the very near future, and this has got to be a center point. This has to be a center point in the strategic planning discussions coming up.
Great.
Thank you for the presentation. So on Friday, I was privileged to be able to go see our current facility and Robbie, what was a great tour. I appreciate it. You definitely know your stuff. But I I don't. So what is the C Mar?
Sure, yeah. So that's construction management at risk. It's a delivery model. It's different than a typical design bid build. So instead of designing, then soliciting for contractor and then building it, you bring the contractor on. We're looking to do that in between the thirty percent and sixty percent design to get to take advantage of real time cost estimating that they can do. So it provides us better cost certainty at a time where we can then update the design. So we don't have it fully designed and then find out if at that point, if there's something that definitely needs to be cut. So that's a, we get feedback during the process. In exchange for that, contractors are pretty good to work with. This is a a model that fits in the industry, larger, complicated projects, working at existing facility. Those are now typically are lean more towards C Mar. So these are, these are things contractors are looking out for and good to work with on.
Okay, thank you. And then only other question I have, on the second to last drawing slide, you mentioned that the hatched boxes were for electrical panels that a person could go and change the speed of the pumps. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that that's one function there.
So they're not, the pumps aren't automated?
They are automated. They, yes. So the the entire system will be automated through what we call SCADA. So I the acronym is escaping me. Essentially, there is a program, a program that goes along with this this whole new system that will provide the automation. The guys will be able to be in there at their terminals, at their computer screens and see what's going on, right? So we can see temperature going up and down, and we'll see pumps turning on and turning off and what speed they're operating at and so on and so forth. As a matter of function, when you're out doing this, because you need to go out and pull samples and check on equipment and all that kind of stuff. Additionally, electrical code is going to require us to have disconnect breakers and stuff right next to equipment. That's that's what all those those hatch boxes essentially do for us.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Over crab tree. Great presentation. You had mentioned in phase three, you alluded to non potable water. Right? So there's going to be abundance of non potable water that we could potentially. Okay, scratch that question. Robbie is saying absolutely not.
Yeah, it would, it it comes down to really the the water rights that we have that go into it and whether or not they have a reusable component to them. I, based on our portfolio, I do not anticipate we would have a large amount available. So so that would be a question and an analysis we would do to figure out whether or not it's worth having that stream. In the same area, we also have the Evans ditch, so we kind of have our non pot need met by that healthy supply. So it's, we're we're in kind of an interesting spot with it.
I think part of the reason for adding that is the treatment technology at that level gets you really close to what could be non pots. It's an option, not a a planned improvement.
Class A solids, is that the solids that you could actually use for composting? That takes it to that level that residents can just drive up and
You can give it away.
Scoop it and give it away, or we can resell it to generate some money.
It's actually the, so the ATAD in the process that we are proposing is currently im- implementation implementation and use at St. Brain at their at their wastewater facility. It's also in use in South Fort Collins facility.
Who has this unit, the most current unit that's in use in Colorado?
Uh, I don't know the most current one. It's ATAD in Colorado has been implemented for, I'd say, the last twenty years.
Okay.
So.
I worked on the first one in the state of Colorado that was built in Edwards, Colorado. Three hundred river water in San Francisco, and it was implemented in about ninety five.
South Fort Collins, their their installation is fairly new. They're they're currently going through design to expand their ATAD process.
My last question is, how many operators and would the new system be able to incorporate AI?
I would say that your new ATAD process would require one FTE, one full time employee to to make sure it's run satisfactory. AI, I think, is a very interesting concept. I don't know that it's fully been successfully implemented in our wastewater space yet. But it's something that we can certainly entertain and talk with the various vendors and others about if that's some. If that's something that, you know, Robbie and counsel desire.
Asking questions. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I just You mentioned, so the the one FTE would run the lab and all the components? Because you had mentioned one FTE for the lab space.
One F
In addition?
No, one FT, one FTE for the solids process. So that's everything at ATAD. So you're running the reactors, you're doing all the chemical feeds, you're doing the thickening, you're doing the dewatering. It's everything within that space.
That was actually already included in our 2026 budget request.
Okay, perfect. So the only additional would be the lab space FTE.
We, so that wouldn't, that FTE would include that lab space. We currently do have a full time lab.
Okay. Thank you also for looking into funding. I know when we had this conversation, there was funding for it at the time. I was like, let's get going. Granted, fast forward, things look very different and so, but I appreciate the effort there. Granted, unfortunate for us, there's not a whole lot at this moment. But as mentioned, as the mayor mentioned, the beginning of the year, hopefully it looked a little different and potential, there'll maybe potential money. I have an audience. And all my questions, all the other questions that I had were answered. But thank you. Great presentation and lots to talk about.
Councilmember Neil.
I prefer to make my comments during the regular session of the tonight so that it's part of the public record.
Councilmember Farrar, you have anything?
Well, I thank you for having us here. It's it's great to be here and get to interact with you and hear what you have to say. I want to reiterate that through the efforts we've provided to date, we've extended and kicked down the road a lot of these major infrastructure costs that are coming up and bought bought the community some time to plan for them. So I thank you for letting us share that story and I hope you found a lot of value in what we've done for you so far.
Well, thank you. I really really appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work and definitely for helping kicking this down the line a little bit. I mean, even though it's not a lot, but it's still every little bit helps. So thank you. Really appreciate all your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to add, going back to the C Mar component that was mentioned, I'm glad that's in place. Because for me, it it helps because I know with this project, there's so many moving parts that that will provide that check and balances in a sense. So thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate your time. All right, we got eight minutes.